From my car on the camper.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We met compliance with all official notifications. Roll call, please.
Sarah Schubert-McConne.
Here.
Laura Gabski.
Yeah.
Ed Gallagher. Nick Olson.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here. Excuse President Steve Olson.
Are we gonna go pledge of allegiance?
The President of Allegiance, the United States of America. To serve the Father and the children of this state. I'm a nation, I'm underdog, indivisible, the living, the seated, the strong.
All right, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comments signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of this meeting. The board requests referring from making any comments involving personal personally identifiable information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at tonight's meeting will be final approval unless otherwise noted. So first is comments by members of the public, which we have one, Mr. Lee Sands.
Good evening. Brooke Taylor, Ed Gallagher. Had quite the three years. Unusual business was the usual. So many, so many big things happening. Notably, like five million dollar deficit, school closure, transitions with board members, and the list goes on and on. Your commitment to showing up was noticed and appreciated. Your presence in our buildings to see firsthand what was going on. Your presence at listening sessions and other meetings to hear what was going on firsthand. You two gave the issues that concern teachers the attention we hoped for. So on behalf of SFT, we'd like to thank you for your service to the schools of Superior and the youth of Superior. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And to the entire school board, I want to thank you all for the commitment you're making by investing in our teaching staff with next year's raise. It's no secret that we're in challenging financial times with declining enrollment and lack of state funding for public schools. We also know that a raise of anything less than the inflation means we are losing ground. We know that we are worth more, and I believe that you know we are worth more too. And considering everything, I also believe that the Superior School Board is doing the best that they can in these challenging times. So, thank you again for your commitment to show how much you value the teachers of Superior. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the disposition of minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion on the minutes? There is no discussion. All those in favor saying a five, I say an aye. Any opposed? Passings. Next item is the report of the superintendent. He has several informational items.
A handful of people coming to share some updates tonight. So of course, Kim O'Donnell, Principal from Four Corners will give us an update. Welcome.
Yeah. Good evening. Good to see all of you. It feels like it's always so weird when you come in the fall and then you present again on the screen. It feels like no time has passed, but a lot has happened, a lot of good things. So, I'm gonna share some of those things with you tonight as far as what's happening out at Four Corners. The progress that we're making for kids and all the good things that maybe I am, maybe I'm not. I'll have a
It's not working.
Not going. I don't wanna press all the buttons and be really trouble.
Is it not working?
Well, thank you, Kim. Any questions?
Let's twist the batteries.
That's what I do at my house.
Switch them out with a remote.
Yep, yep, done that too. And if you just wanna take the, it's okay.
Dave said batteries weren't in the budget, so.
Otherwise, you can split it for me. All right, so we'll go ahead. This slide was in there from the spring, so I did wanna share just a little bit, you know, we had talked at the beginning of the year concerning that transition with new students and new families coming into not only our school community, but, but all the school communities and really what that was gonna look like. And I can say this year has, it's the, our new families that I don't consider our new families anymore. They're just, they're just our families. And it's, it's funny, you know, sometimes I have to think, were you here last year or not? Because the kids have really just kind of become part of our school community, which is an amazing thing. Our PTA has done a phenomenal job this year of bringing new families in and having lots of family events and making sure that everyone feels welcome and feels a part. Our PTA membership is up this year, which is great. We've got a, a very active PTA president who's just really proactive about reaching out to our families. So we've had a variety of events. We had our first truck or treat this year. We had a reading night. We had a couple of movie nights. We had a spring carnival. We had a roller skating night. We've got science night coming up in May. So they've been really busy and it's, it's been a, a beautiful thing. Celebrations as far as what's going on. So first of all, our attendance rate as of Friday is at ninety-seven percent. So we feel really good about that. Our kids are, are coming to school. They're there every day.
How does that compare to previous years? Is it up or has that been pretty?
It's pretty consistent between ninety-five and ninety-eight. We hang right in there. So, taking a look at some of our, our behavior data and our referrals, you know, this time of year, spring is always can be, can be a little, you know, challenging. Kids are getting stir crazy, just like the rest of us. But what's nice this year, looking at our data this year compared to last year, referrals are down twenty-seven percent compared to this time last year, with major referrals down thirty-seven percent. And I really attribute a lot of that, of course, to my staff and my teachers, but our PBIS team has been really active this year. They've, they're recognizing positive behaviors in, in individual kids. Their, our staff is doing a really good job of that. You know, we honor classes of the week every week with our specialists. So every single week, our, all of our specialists have a class of the week and they've come up with criteria with the kids of, okay, if you wanna be class of the week, what do we need to do? We need to do X, Y, Z. And then they have the kids actually say, all right, how did we do? Here's the list of the things. So I think that's, that's really impacted what they see because they, they see them, you know, thirty minutes or sixty minutes a week. And so they've, they've done a good job there. Couple other things, the picture, that's our, that's the tube, as the kids call it. It's our, our PBIS thermometer. So all of the tickets that the kids receive for positive behavior, they put them in different little bins so they can, you know, decide what they want, whether it's extra recess or whether it's, you know, get to, to play hockey and farts at lunch, or whether it's bring a stuffed animal, those kinds of things. And then we dump them all into this tube because we really want, even if all the kids don't get tons and tons of recognition, we want them to feel like they can own this as a school. So every time we hit the next lineup, we have a, a off school celebration. So, and we're, we're just about due for our next ones. We gotta figure out what that's gonna look. And I think the most amazing thing, everybody knows this is testing season, so we are on track to have a hundred percent of our kids assessed by the end of
I was gonna, I'm sure Kate appreciates that.
This month, third year in a row.
Yeah.
So we're, we're in the hundred percent club. All or none, right? So, and they're taking it really seriously, which I like to see. I've acted a few tests and the kids are really taking their time and, and putting in the effort. So that, that feels good to see. Some challenges that we have. So one of the things that we've really had to work through as a school this year is with our EMLSS teacher. She is shared with Cooper, and so we have her three days a week, and then she's at Cooper Tuesday, two days a week. She's an amazing teacher and amazing individual. She, she doesn't do anything halfway. She's all in all the time. And so it's been really tough for her and, and for us to try to, to problem solve through. She's there three days a week. She wants to see all of her groups. She wants to meet with the teachers and the PLCs. She wants to do all the progress monitoring and that's, that's, I think that's a, that's a say, it causes her some stress because she wants to do it all because she's that amazing. So we've, we've worked around that. But it's definitely been a challenge for our building. I think time for our PLC teams to meet is always a challenge, especially at the elementary school. You know, there's, there is no downtime. You are on all day from the time the kids walk into the building until the time they walk out. So having that protected time for teachers to really collaborate with one another, go through the, the data, take a look at where our kids playing for small group interventions and extensions, things like that. And I would have to say, I think this year, and I know we did it last year too, but those professional development days have been really crucial in allowing teachers that those big chunks of time to actually work together, look at the data, really dig into what's going on with their kids to, to put together some, some interventions that are really, really meaningful. That takes time. And you can't do it in, you know, one morning a week. It, it takes more. So I am very appreciative of that, and we're seeing the impact in our student, our student data for sure. So our goals. So our goal has been and always has been, of course, that we ideally want to see a hundred percent of our students proficient in reading. But this year, we want, really wanted to focus on proficiency, yes, but also growth. So taking a look at, we wanted seventy percent or more of our students in grades two through five on track or low risk, according to the spring assessment. Students in K one at, all of our students in K one being at or above the fiftieth percentile according to the state mandated screener, which we know now is AIMS Web. And a hundred percent of our students making typical or aggressive growths from fall to spring in reading. And so we don't have the spring data in yet because we are right in the middle of AIMS testing and we haven't yet done the spring fast bridge. But just some highlights from fall to winter. Our first grade early literacy scores, our students that were meeting the benchmark, sixty-five percent were meeting the benchmark in the fall, and we jumped to eighty-five percent of the first graders meeting that benchmark in the winter. So we're, we're well on our way to that hundred percent. For our second grade, the A reading scores, so that's the, an overall picture of their reading skills at that point. Fifty-six percent of our students at, in the fall were met or exceeded the benchmark and in the winter, eighty percent of our second graders, and then our third graders, sixty percent. So we, at the winter check, we were right on. So I'm excited to see what our, what our spring scores look like. And the most exciting thing is, I mentioned our EMLSS teacher. We've exited twelve students from that program, not because we don't have room, but because they closed the gap and they were ready to graduate out. So it's been pretty amazing. All right. So as far as what are we doing between now and the end of the year? We've still got time and we're still going. We're gonna continue the use of very specific structured interventions daily with small groups at K three and our EMLSS teacher is working with those teachers as well to make sure that whatever she's doing with students in intervention is carrying over to what they're doing in small groups in the classroom, which is really making a big difference. We need to continue to collect, monitor, and adjust our instruction as teachers always do, and they're doing a phenomenal job focusing on those foundational reading skills as well as reading comprehension. Our PLCs have done a phenomenal job this year, stayed and focused on the four PLC questions, really looking at comment assessments, looking at their data, bringing data weekly to the table and making decisions based on that. It's been really powerful. Utilizing our win time for interventions all the way till the end of the year. We go till June twelfth and we need to run till the end of the marathon. And then the last thing will be really to evaluate and celebrate our spring data in May and then take a look at who didn't quite make it and make a plan for what do we need to do first day, starting next week. That's where we are.
I have a question. So your EMLSS, so they're there three days a week. Now, I know obviously you don't have the same numbers as other schools, but what are do you see that there's less students at your school who would need the service?
Well, I don't know how many are at other buildings. I can tell you ours, she sees thirty-one students every day. So that's just the students that come to her for intervention. And right now, we've got a little more than forty students that have the, in the personalized reading plans that were triggered from the data in the winter from the AIMS Web. So I don't wanna say our need is greater or less than other buildings, but the, the need is there. And, and the fact that we've moved and graduated twelve students out of the program does make me wonder what we could do with that.
I guess that's just why I asked, you know, it's not necessarily that the need is greater or less.
Oh, no, I mean.
You're smaller, so it's tough with three days, but.
Yeah. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lebers. See you back there. Okay, the podium is away here. So you were gonna join us last week, but.
You didn't want here last week, I promise.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Good to see everybody. Before I jump in, Ed, Brooke, appreciate everything you've done for our school district and our community. It was a pleasure working with you. Always enjoyed having you guys come into the building. I'm sure I'll still see you guys. All right. So I can use this keyboard, huh?
Yeah.
All right, there's the dream team right there. I knew admin team for this school year and we're, we're doing a great job. I'm really proud of Shansier, Sam Skerritt, and Mr., Mr. John Raker are working really hard and it's been a great, great year. Moving forward, I like to conclude some pictures of our kiddos. One of our sports dress up days. It's great to see our kids participating in some of those, those fun activities that we have throughout the year. I'm gonna pass out some, some stuff for you guys. We're gonna be sharing a little bit of data here in the next couple of weeks. And I thought I'd share that with, with you. So we put together a little one pager. I'm gonna go through this. These are some great celebrations. Referrals, major referrals are down for the last three years, sixty percent. That's a big, that's a big number. We're hopeful at that. You know, we still have a few months, a couple of months left to go, but we're gonna, we're gonna land about fifty percent less than even just last year. I think that number at the bottom right, number of kids that are participating in extracurricular intermurals, I think that'll be closer to four hundred. We had a couple more intermurals start up here recently. There's a lot of sort of reason for some of these successes. Oh, and the other graph, our attendance rate. Currently, I think this is gonna, you know, rise a little bit too as we, as we get finished with the year, but we're under ten percent right now with the number of kids that are have ten or more absences.
That's a really big deal.
That's a huge deal. When I, when I started back at the middle school, that number was, you know, forty-six, forty-seven percent. And you know, we wanted to build a school, make a school place where kids felt safe, could come and learn and, and have some fun. And I think that, I think these stats are kind of showing that we've been working really hard to make that the outcome for our kiddos.
Hey, Aaron, the three twenty-nine, does that include students who may be in other extracurriculars that are not intermurals? Do you know what I'm saying? Like some, like some kids may not participate in intermurals, but they're involved in other sports like basketball or volleyball.
Yeah, this is just.
That's just intermurals, right? So this is even higher when you look at sex and stuff.
Yes.
Did we ever get an update on the intermural, like if somebody's gonna be heading in, if it's?
Wendy'd like you to believe that she's not gonna be around next year, but I think she's still gonna.
She's doing a phenomenal job, but I know it's a lot.
What we are doing is to make that system a little more put together and organized so that we're already having one of our secretaries take on some of those responsibilities like posting stuff and collecting information that, that parents send in. So that it's, it's a little less for, for one person to take on, absolutely. Some of the reasons for this, it's people. We've built some nice programs, but we've got wonderful people that are making all this happen. I'll start with our teachers. Spartan start to have the time to, to do our SEL work and our, and our universal literacy strategies. That's been a game changer. The, the teachers get an hour, fifty-five minutes with our students for first hour. They get a nice ease into the day. And, and I, I think that's been a real real big difference maker. New this year, we, we, if you recall, we had check and connect mentors. This year we don't, and we wanted to utilize a space for, to support our students. So we started with the, what's called the R and R room, rest and reset return. Kids get, get an opportunity to go to that space to avoid getting a referral from their classroom teacher. And if it's a quick turnaround, okay, just check in and get what they need really. Our, our data coming out of that space is really good. Our students are not spending a ton of time in there. Our, our goal with all of this is not get a referral, but to be in classrooms where you can do your learning. Really pleased with that. I started in this district, you know, sixteen years ago, and I started a, what was called back then a behavior lab, and this was my dream for that space. It's kind of triage for kids. You know, a lot of kids just need a quick five minute turnaround and get back into class. Others might need a little bit more. And so we've got some people that can help navigate that and, and support our students. So that's been a really successful program. Again, people.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, you know, a lot of schools have in-school suspension, right? Or they have spaces. But I think what you've done is you've created a structure, a system in that space, and you put the right people in that place, right? And so I think that's really important. You can't just simply. Yeah.
And our vision is, is for kids to stay in classrooms.
Yeah, right.
That's where they, that's where they need to be. That's where they learn. But we know that we have a, we have a good amount of students that come to us with some high needs, and so we can meet their needs in this, in one, in one of these spaces.
Is there something that would, the high school could benefit from? We've talked about it.
So yes.
We're talking, I want Mr. Lebers to kind, or Mr. Fezzi to kind of lead that charge. But yeah, we've, we've talked about how to, how could we do some of this? Yeah, replicated this up at the high school.
What that could look like, for sure.
Yeah.
Our deans and social workers, I wanted to collect some data. So January and February, I had my deans and our social worker just kind of tracked the number of students that they're working with. Our deans worked with, it's not eight hundred different kids, right? But they made eight hundred contacts during two months of time. I wanted to do them to keep track of that because I wanted to get a taste of, I see all the students that they're connecting with and they're supporting too. They process referrals. They help out with supervision. They do a lot of things in our building. But they're also, they took on a lot of the kids that were meeting with our check and connect mentors too. So they're, they're working very hard. Our school social worker, you know, she, she connects our families and our students with with supports in the community. They check in with students as well. It's more of those tier three kind of situations, maybe a student's having a really difficult time at home and they need some support. They, they, she does a wonderful job connecting with students and she's made over two hundred contacts during that same timeframe. A lot goes into making this thing, making this thing work. Bar is also on there. It's been a wonderful opportunity for our teachers to do a couple of things. One, get organized around all of our students, make sure that every student we are talking about and supporting, right? And then a secondary thing that's been wonderful is that once a week, our teachers get to do an nighttime activity, team building or some fun activity where they get to connect with their students deeper level. So bar helps a lot of those areas. And the, and the point here, rather than challenges, I thought this is, a lot goes into making this thing work. Our teachers are working hard to improve outcomes for our kids and build relationships. They've even started their own mentor program to connect with fifteen or twenty of our students in the building. We really revamped our tier two and three reading and math interventions. Like I said, the book, the work that the APs are doing with their, supporting our teachers and, and our students and their families, our meetings. Our instructional coaches developing our reading strategies and all the training for math that's, that's going on this year, all the pullouts and, and the trainings that happen monthly. And our counselors jumping in and, and supporting students and their families as well. A lot goes into making this supporting all nine hundred of our students. Okay, our goal, increase the number of students making modest, typical or aggressive growth on fast bridge reading scores. We wanna get that number up to a hundred percent. And, and the line items here that we're working towards this year, building collective advocacy amongst our teachers and our staff around PLCs, grading practices, those literacy strategies, improving outcomes in the classroom and restoring. So that's been our continuous improvement goal all year long. There's some of that hard work happening in the classroom. Next steps, I, I really see our shared leadership team kind of wrapping things up this year and continuing on. We wanna build upon our momentum for next year. We wanna boost our tier two interventions in the classrooms, continue with those tier three interventions, supporting our students with their behavior. We are a bar, bar school now. I mean, we've been, this is our third year. I, I see that sticking with us for years to come. Our teachers really appreciate the opportunity to get together, talk about students, work with our counselors and eight assistant principals to support our students. And then continue building community and stakeholder relationships. I think some fun stuff. Our sixth grade team went to the down to the deck, got some curling, got to watch some curling. The entire sixth grade team went down. They had a blast. Any questions, guys?
Thank you for that. This is very nice. This is gonna be shared website.
Well, we've got some opportunities to talk about some of the successes. Some other school leaderships have reached out. We thought this would just be a wonderful way to highlight some of the things that are, that are going into this. We're gonna be talking about it at the bar conference, so.
Middle school, they've reached out and our princesses reached out to us and asked, you know, about our success and how this has happened under Aaron's leadership. And so being able to kind of share that with other districts will be good.
It'll be really good.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron.
Thanks, Ash. Want this back?
Yeah. Uh, no, we got one more presentation. All right, and Taylor, it doesn't look like Taylor's here tonight, so Caitlin. Got a couple of agenda items for us tonight. And some students, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. And I'll try and keep it compact and, you know, just the, just the fun highlights.
So I'm gonna share a little bit about senior projects, academic and career planning, some highlights, and then a little bit about Superior Days. And I have a couple of students here who are here to, to talk a little bit about their experience at Superior Days as well. So just a quick review and reminder for anyone that doesn't know or has, you know, is not the, obviously the forefront of most people's minds like it is mine. So our high school students really have a nine, twelve experience, and there's kind of two parts to this. So each year has a community service component, and then at least one kind of universal career exploration piece. Obviously, a lot more of that career exploration happens in individual classes and happens in, you know, various selective students might be, you know, taking, but trying to make sure that there's at least some universal pieces that are open to all students, no matter what class they're in, no matter what things they might be doing. So in ninth grade, a lot of that happens in Keystone because all students take Keystone. So that is a place where we can kind of support that. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about our career fairs in, in a little bit. Those are actually open to all students, nine, twelve, but we do see a lot of underclassmen attend those. A lot of our freshmen, sophomores, some juniors do attend those. In junior year, students have the opportunity to participate in what we call career experience days, for lack of a, a better term. But those are, are different things that take students outside the building to kind of explore some employers, some education institutions, things like that. And then culminating, obviously, senior year with the, like, senior year capstone project experience where students do fifteen hours of community service and then a more extensive career research with a job shadow and interviews. So trying to build them up to that, starting in ninth grade and making sure they have lots of So trying to build them up to that, um starting in ninth grade and making sure they have lots of those experiences along the way. Um so a couple of things, just to highlight our career fairs, we host three per year. Um again, these are open to students in grades nine through twelve. Um we see the majority of our attendance coming from our underclassmen. They happen, you know, during the school day in the gym. Um they are easy to access for those students. And is a a good way to help introduce them to a lot of different people, a lot of different possibilities. Um we average about thirty tables or so at each event. Um so that's employers who have been there, um that's education institutions, other community organizations. Uh we try and organize them by career clusters. So of the sixteen career clusters, we kind of group them and sort of divide them by ones that are somewhat connected. Um but there's, there's a lot of variety in each of those, just as a way to kind of organize and advertise things for students. Um, I just included one, one picture here. Uh so, you know, the gym is full for the afternoon and students come in some um independently, some with classes and have a chance to to talk to a lot of different people. Um, a lot of our our guests bring some fun, interactive stuff and kids get to try out some some different things. You can see a flight simulator and a creamy baby and some firefighting gear. So um lots of cool experiences for our kids. Um, the career experience days, these are field trips outside the building. Um so these are primarily targeted for our juniors. Um and these are things where we go into the community. So these are organized again by career cluster. Um and so we will try and visit employers, UWS, um Fond du Lac, Northwood Tech. Um each day looks a little different depending on the career cluster. Um I put a number up here of about twelve to fifteen of these types of days per school year. Um but that includes not just the ones that I plan specifically, but also some of the other events that we attend. So like UWS plans a transportation and logistics day. They set that up with Helver Lines, they set that up with their department. So I don't have a whole lot to do with planning the logistics of that. But that's the one that we use to kind of meet that career cluster. So um some of them are kind of planned in-house, um some of them are things that we go out and attend. But those are things that all juniors um are invited to sign up for and attend. And the idea being that we get them out of the school, get them out into the community. Um maybe, you know, help them see themselves in a a local employer or at a local education institution that they might not otherwise. Um and so that's been a really cool experience. Some kids attend several days, some kids attend one. Um we have some that don't attend any for a variety of reasons too. But um trying to get kids to participate in at least one of those um in their junior year. So we try and take them some cool places. Um I pulled a couple of pictures, one from um the fire department on our lawn public safety day. Um one from the radio station at UMD on our communication arts and arts, audiovisual communications day. There we go. Healthcare Day, we went to Ascenda and Lakesdale College, so they got to tour some different programs there. Um senior project presentations have um kind of morphed and changed a little bit in the last few years. There's now two presentation options. Um students can pick from, so either a traditional presentation or um a senior project showcase where they're set up at a table um in the commons at the high school. Um and they have various items and artifacts and documents that represent their project um displayed at their table and then have conversations with whoever might come up to their table. So they're encouraged to invite people, um family, friends, people that have helped with their project. Um we host them on nights that other things are happening in the building, so there's usually teachers around or people in the building for other things as well, um so that they might stop by the tables and and see what some of our seniors have done. Um so that's been really positive. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that. Um the kids seem to have a good time. People seem to enjoy kind of the the atmosphere of the of the nights. Um, a couple of just celebrations. The class of twenty twenty five is the first class to have the full new senior project experience. Um so post COVID, things being waived and adjusted, like class of twenty twenty five is the first, like nine twelve, all the requirements were there and have been expected of them. So that's kind of an exciting thing. Um they're also my first full group. Um I started at the high school when they were freshmen. So um that's kind of an extra special group for me as well. Um I think the senior project showcase presentations is a an exciting celebration and it helps make that process and make that final presentation feel kind of like a celebration in and of itself. Um they get to show people what they did. It's not, um for a lot of them, it's a lot less stressful and does feel more exciting and celebratory for students. Um our ACP plan and website was chosen as an exemplar by DPI. Um so that is on the DPI website as well, um as an exemplar for other districts. Um but that was, that was an exciting celebration. Um and then just our continued partnership and student experiences with the employers and education institutions in our community. Um we've had a lot of kids do some really cool job shadows, um had some really great volunteer experiences. And that is thanks to everyone in our community being willing to open their doors to our students and work with our students. Um this year in particular, our partnership with Ascenda has been great. Their job shadow program has allowed a lot of our students in um to some careers that previously they weren't able to shadow and able to see. So that's been an exciting addition as well. Before I move on to Superior Days, any questions about any?
First of all, it's just awesome what you've done with the program. We just really appreciate it, the exposure to employee employers, schools. And the just the ability to interact with adults and have those awkward conversations and they're just comfortable as they do them more. It's just fantastic.
It's only gonna get better when these students come up here.
Right. So thank you.
Thank you. We've got, we've got some stuff I still like to do, but feels good.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna talk just a little bit about Superior Days and then I'm gonna I'll turn it over to the kids and if you can ask them some questions, that'd be great. I didn't have them prepare anything formal. So feel free to, you know, just just ask them some questions. They'll talk. Um, so as some of you know, we took a group of students um and some staff members to Superior Days this year. Um with the um our primary issue and goal at least being to advocate for an increase and creating more equity in K twelve public school funding. So we were fortunate that the Superior Days organization um agreed to this, was on board with this, um selected this as an issue. Um and we were able to do some work ahead of time to prepare our students um and make sure that they were good advocates for us down in Madison. And I have a couple here with me tonight who did a great job, along with all of their classmates that went um down to Madison. So we had eighteen students from Superior High School attend. Um they were about half of a thirty three student delegation. So there were also students from Maple and Solon um who attended as well. Um we provided five speaker introductions and they made lots of positive impressions, I think, on a variety of people that we encountered in Madison. Um and they got to have a lot of cool, cool experiences. And those of you who were there or have been there in the past or have talked to people who have gone know that um the student delegation is a sort of prized gem of Superior Days. Um they're always very proud of our students and very excited to talk to our students. And we get a lot of positive feedback from representatives, from other people in the group um in terms of how well our our students represent us. So and this year was no exception to that. Um we also had some additional experiences for students. We brought them on a UW Madison campus tour, um a Capitol tour. They obviously had lots of opportunities to network with people on their lobby teams, other members of the Superior Days organization, um other students from other schools. And then obviously, they had lobby meetings with representatives um advocating for specifically um public education funding, along with the other issues brought down by this period days group. A few photos of our of our students in action here. Um you can see a couple students, the student in the bottom right corner with Senator Quinn. Um the student on the left is a Superior High School student and the student on the right is a Northwestern High School student. Um the entire student delegation from um actually all the counties, Douglas County primarily, but then there were some students from Iron County and maybe Bayfield area, I think, as well. Um in that picture, um Callie, who's here tonight, and I'm sure is super happy that I put her picture um in the slideshow presenting Governor Evers with um a Superior Days sweater as well. So you know, fun, fun shenanigans that happened too. He was a good sport and proudly wore the sweater, so it helps when a kid, you know. Um, so like you said, I have a couple of students here just to share a little bit of their perspective. Um, you know, maybe one or two things they took away from the experience. Um and then answer any questions you would like to to ask them about that as well. Um we very much appreciate the support. Um this is, you know, a big endeavor, a financial endeavor, all those things. Um but we very much appreciate the support from the board and from the community to make this happen and be able to not only bring our students down to Madison to advocate on our behalf, but to give them that experience and that real life experience of advocacy and, you know, speaking for themselves, speaking for their community, um and being a part of that change.
Caitlin, so I want to hear from the students totally, but I feel I was down there. Uh and I just think there there's two things I just really want to give you and like all the folks that you worked with from the staff that helped out with that as well. Um one, I know um David and other folks worked really hard to try to get some sponsorships um to support that, so it wasn't as much of a financial burden, which was much appreciated.
Even did a lot of work on that, yeah.
Yes, and he did a lot of capturing, you know, and the video that he put out was great. But then also, uh, I have to brag, we, you all were so superior. The other students were great. They had no preparation. And I felt awful for them because they came there and were like didn't know the topics, didn't, you know, there just wasn't a lot of prep. And so I don't know if there's a way to like help those other students last year, but I will say they were very jealous of our kids and how well versed they were and prepared.
Um and Caitlin loved a lot of that. And then Caitlin and I met with him on multiple occasions. Actually, David went in to go educate them and then he quickly found out that they were well versed in some things and yeah.
We had, yeah, and we had a lot of support from the staff at the high school too. We ran a, I mean, it was only one, one day, but we ran like a like a mock practice session. And we had, you know, some of our administrators and some other teachers and stuff like sit in as, you know, mock representatives too.
It was just a drastic difference and I I don't want to minimize the other kids. It was awesome. They were there. But I had one of them there and it was like, okay, let's let's get you prepared in fifteen minutes. And and that's not really fair to the kids. So good job, students and staff.
All right. Come up and again, just share a little bit about, you know, maybe one or two things that stuck with you. And then make sure you all have a question or two.
Um, I'm Kelly Peterson. I'm a junior at the high school.
And I'm Addie Matyszek. I'm also a junior at the high school.
Um, so when we were down at Superior Days, we got to do a lot of other things other than just lobbying. Um we got to take a tour of the Capitol, uh which was really cool because I think most everyone, except for a handful of students from Superior, had never been to Madison and even then never been in the Capitol. So that was a really cool experience uh for me.
Um, yeah, and we also had an opportunity to tour Madison, like the school, which really helped people understand what happens down there and how big of an opportunity it could be to go there. Since it is a far drive and people don't all have that opportunity to go and tour it by themselves.
Uh for me, the lobbying was definitely my favorite part of it. Uh it was definitely a very interesting experience that I was not necessarily aware of how it would go, uh because it's such an odd thing that not many people actually know what happens. Um I definitely learned about a lot about how our state government works. Um and like how legislation gets made and all the decisions that go into that, which definitely opened my eyes as well as being able to see, you know, all the issues that were brought down there were really cool to learn about. And there were so many professionals from the community that definitely taught me a lot the last time.
Yeah, I think it was just cool that we were able to go down there and do like lobby for something that were is important to us because school finance is obviously something that's important to us as we attended. And so we have future people that will attend our school, so it's important that we're able to help with that. And it was cool to be able to do something that meant a lot to us and for the future.
Uh, do you have any questions for us?
First question is, did you guys feel like you're listened to and from the people you're speaking to?
Definitely. Um, I think a lot of that's, at least in my meetings, um they definitely listen to me more than they listen to the adults that I was in the room with. It's definitely, I think it definitely caught them off guard to see a kid in there instead of um an adult, as well as someone who actually knew what they were talking about. We get more S point verse, uh but it worked out well.
Yeah, I think it was, um, a lot of, it was nice to have like our school specific statistics and being able to show that, help them understand truly what's going on and be able to use our statistics to help. And it's not just like we're, wait, so we look more well versed in what we're talking about.
What was your biggest takeaway that you would tell someone else to advocate for someone else to go down there and do the same thing? What would be your biggest takeaway to present to someone else?
Uh my, like to like as like a plus for them to go down there, um you learn so much. I I had no idea about half of what goes on in our state government. We learn a lot about the federal government in school, but not a lot about how our state government actually works. The people that we met with, whether it was like the actual representatives themselves or their staffers, were definitely very open to sharing on how it actually works. We gave them our, we pitched to them what we wanted and they they definitely gave back feedback as well as what they could do and what they couldn't do with what we asked them to do.
And I think it would also, it's also like important for people to understand. It's hard to understand that it's not like you're talking, it's not like you're talking with like some scary, like they're actually people too. And it's very like, it's more relaxed than anyone thinks it is. So it's not as like intimidating for people to.
Yeah, before I actually went down there, I definitely thought it was gonna be like a room of fifty people staring at me while I stood there and presented, but it was a lot more relaxed than I expected.
So saying this, this is nothing tonight compared.
I mean, Kelly, you know, was a a great representative, is a good sport about everything and probably got a little strong armed into going. Um, but I do think she, you know, like, so that there's, there's that element as well. And I think her experience and hopefully I can have both of these ladies along with quite a few others next year as well. Uh now that they kind of know, this was both of their first times going to Superior Days too. So now that they kind of know what to expect, they'll be, you know, even better representatives.
I kind of noticed that. Is that the plan of like, you know, eleventh and twelfth graders? So the twelfth graders can kind of mentor the eleven, I mean, it kind of seemed to work that way, but.
Kind of works out. Yeah, I think, I think for the most part, um once in my experience, once a student goes, they're usually game to go again. Um, you know, usually the the challenge is is letting kids know kind of what it's about and getting them kind of hooked in. But I think most likely, I mean, I won't put them on the spot entirely. I can probably get them to come again. Uh, so, yeah. It helps when they kind of know what to expect and can tell other students what to expect because I can, but that doesn't always translate as well.
I know one of our other students, or a couple of them are in mock trial and they were able to go observe part of the Supreme Court hearing and they were losing their mind. They were just like, this is so dreamy, like, and like, what a cool experience to go listen and sit in on a Supreme Court hearing. They just really um seem to learn a lot, just again, that Capitol experience, really seeing what goes on there. So, thanks, ladies.
Thank you. Both are very well spoken and I know all of you are so proud. I heard such wonderful things and no better people to advocate than our students. So thank you guys for doing that. You did awesome.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
You.
All right, I got a couple of action items. Do you want to take those, Ed?
Our first action item is consideration of overnight field trip for Spartan Spins to, to attend the annual J E A and S P A Fall Conference. Is up there on the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes. Second one is consideration of overnight fieldship for eighth grade science students to attend the Lake Superior Youth Symposium. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Uh, next category, Board Committee Report, starting with Budget Insurance Committee. We have one action item. Gift grants and bequests. Administration recommends the approval to accept gift grants and bequests received in March of twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Thank you, of course, as always.
No discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. A couple informational items. First one is at the committee of the whole on April seventh, twenty twenty five, David C., Director of Business Services, provided the equalization aid update. Then we also went through the font ten revenue and expenditure preliminary reports.
Motion to accept the budget and insurance committee report.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Passes. Experts on Negotiations Committee, uh, first action item. His administration recommends the approval of the updated twenty twenty, April twenty twenty five new hires and separations report.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next one is administration recommends approval of the changes to the employee handbook for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year per the attached summary.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
I think the discussion that happened last week was, you know, important and good discussion to have, obviously. It was just for clarification purposes and, and things um, with the fifty percent principal days or whatever, so. Again, good to have discussion about, um, we got clarification and so now we move forward.
And I did go back and find some old S F T notes um, that we had that talked about. Says staff preferred half workdays in August this year as opposed to full professional development day, full workday. I do think that there's other discussion that was hammered out with the language in that, so like Brooke said, again, it's. It's our opportunity to have discussion, it's the only opportunity we do have to have discussion. And so it's important that we do that and have our questions answered, but moving on. I know I had discussion last week. I don't have any changes to make in that, so. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next one is a new action item. Administration and the Personnel and Negotiations Committee recommend the salary increase for teachers for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year. As listed below, proposed salary increase would, increase was ratified by the Superior Federation of Teachers on March twentieth, twenty twenty five. This would be to add a two percent of the base step to the bachelor and master's schedule. For a total increase of three hundred fourteen thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, seventy-six cents. You can see the attached new salary schedule.
Motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and I would prefer to set myself, Nick. Will abstain from voting on this action item. I don't think, am I missing anyone else? Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I just want to say this is new, right? You know, to add to the masters and. Again, we, we heard Dave, um, or Lee, what you said earlier. And we're, we're trying to do what we can, so we hope this shows a, a good faith gesture.
And I want to thank the S F T for ratifying it and kind of acknowledging that. I think it's a good partnership where we're all trying to work together and another.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the record, I'm abstaining and I assume Nick Schumacher is as well.
Yes.
Oh, and I should say that um, Steve Olson obviously isn't here, but he did uh, express. Where he stands on all this and he supports these uh, as we move forward, so he can't vote, obviously not being here, but he wanted to give that to us.
All right, so it passes. The next one is a new action item. Administration and Personnel and Negotiations Committee recommend the salary increase for support staff. For the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year as listed below. It'll be add two percent to each step. For a total increase of one hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and eight cents. See the attached new salary schedule.
Should we accept?
Second.
A motion to accept and a second, any discussion?
Yes. Um. I, we as a board and, and that may change moving forward, but have agreed to kind of just. Do a total revaluation, um, moving forward. As to where everyone's at, um, and we realize there are some inequities there, so. We didn't have time this year, um, but that doesn't mean conversations are ending. In any way.
And I'll add to that. I was going to share once we got kind of to the admins portion, but. Um, as a board, like you said, we've heard from so many of you at our listening sessions that there are some discrepancies that things need to be adjusted and we want to acknowledge that we do see the need and so. The board that is here and then the ones that are coming on have um, committed to looking at that this summer. Um, especially with some of our, like our admin groups and um, some of our other groups that are getting a little bit. Um, of a bigger discrepancy there, so we acknowledge that. We've heard you guys and we're trying to do again what we can, so.
So we're going to make, make an effort this summer to meet as the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. To look at all those groups and really comprehensively look at them and make sure that they're more equitable looking forward.
Right.
Any other discussion? Amy again?
I'm good. I was expecting to tell people around the professional staffers.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next one, the new action item, Administration Personnel and Negotiations Committee recommend the salary increase for professional staff. The twenty twenty five, twenty six school year as listed below. This will be add two percent to each step. For a total increase of twenty-four thousand, six hundred five dollars and twenty cents. See the attached new salary schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion?
Think I just want to reiterate, um, from last year and this year. These are not intentionally to divide people in groups. The board is trying to do the best that they can, trying to keep people, retain people, pay them what they're worth while also looking at a budget deficit and. And things of that nature, so it's really hard. Um, and we have to do most of this here in open session, so again, it's an uncomfortable thing to talk about. Um, and handle when we're sitting in front of a lot of people going through this, so I hope everyone knows. That they're all valued and important. It's just, this is what the board felt this year, so.
I think that's why we're looking at it. Change the setup to help us make those changes fair.
Yes.
Definitely need more time to do that, though. It was not, and yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Last one is the new action item, Administration Personnel and Negotiations Committee recommend the salary increase for administration staff for the twenty twenty five, twenty six. School year as listed below. This would be add two percent of the base step for a total increase of fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars, forty-seven cents. See the attachment salary schedule.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
These were budgeted in, uh, we went to referendum, but we also had to budget, you know, raises for retention and keeping staff, so. Again, we're not just throwing this out there, this was all budgeted intentionally.
Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to accept the Personnel and Negotiations Committee report.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Teaching and Learning Committee, one informational item at the committee of the whole on April seventh, twenty twenty five, Chris Lenzman, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, provided an update. On elementary literacy resource training.
Motion to accept Teaching and Learning Committee report.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy and Rules Committee. Administration proposes the approval of changes of the following policies based on yearly recommendations in order to be in compliance with state and federal legal updates. Uh, first action item is second reading of policy seventy-three ten, disposition of personal property.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next one, in early twenty twenty five, federal court decision vacated twenty twenty four, title nine regulations effectively reverting to the twenty twenty rules nationwide. This is a second reading, um, will be. Rescinding policy twenty-two sixty-four, non-discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities for addressing allegations of sex discrimination. Including sex-based harassment which occurs on or after August first, twenty twenty four. And will be reverting to policy twenty-two sixty-six, all the same as the above.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I informational item, in early twenty twenty five, federal, federal court decision vacated twenty twenty four. Title nine regulations effectively reverting to the twenty twenty rules nationwide, the second reading, this is. For the administrative guidelines, to rescind administrative guideline twenty-two sixty-four and revert to administrative guideline. Twenty-two sixty-six, all the same language as the policies.
Motion to accept Policies and Rules Committee report.
Again.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Uh, next section, other reports by members of the board. Anybody have any reports?
It's you and Brooke's last meeting.
So I'll just start. I'll be super brief, not fill anybody's time. Obviously, it's my last meeting here. Um, first of all, I just want to say, um, congratulations to Catherine and Shelley. I fully support both them coming onto the board and I'm happy for them and I hope you guys will take them in. As, as any other member of the board and treat them accordingly, but um, I want to congratulate them and. Uh, let them know I hope they do a wonderful job here. Second, I wanted to show my appreciation uh, to all the staff. Um, I think it's, it's been a privilege to be able to. I guess create and uh, have relationships with staff, whether they be. Teachers, janitors, nurses, admin, principals, whatever, all across the board. I think over the last three years. Um, we've built such incredible relationships, not only between myself and all of you, but I think all of you and the board in general. Um, so I want to thank you for, um. You know, whether you like me or hate me, I, I, I want to thank you for the, uh, I guess, respect that everybody has shown and, uh. I guess living up to the superior name within our district here. It's really been a, a great three years and I've enjoyed it and I will miss some of it, not all of it, but, but some, because it has. Has been a challenging three years, but thank you to all the staff um, for your support, um. Amy, um, again, I want to say I appreciate uh, our work together. We have had our differences, but. Um, we found ways to communicate with each other, be supportive of each other and, and move forward in this district. With opposing views and similar views, I've actually really enjoyed our time together and our, and our meetings, um, and figuring out. The best course for our district here, so thank you, Amy. And then to the board, again, um, Steve paraphrased it earlier when, when we talked to him, but I think this board has been a. Truly a wonderful board. Uh, we have a lot of different opinions here, but I think this board has worked real well together, hearing each other out, communicating with each other. Um, and moving forward and after disagreements are, are had. Um, I'd ask you guys to move forward, keep this, keep this board going in a positive direction, keep listening to our staff. Uh, keep hearing, keep asking questions and be as involved as you possibly can. I think there is only positive things that can happen on this board, uh, should you continue down the path that you guys are already on. I will again, miss the board. Maybe it's not my last time here, maybe it'll be here in the future, who knows? Some anxiety from Amy right now, maybe. No, but I've truly enjoyed it, so thank you everybody for, um. This time I've had on the board.
I'll be echoing a lot of that. It's no surprise that I wanted to say something and I know there aren't a lot of people here, but maybe there's somebody watching online, maybe they'll watch it archived and maybe they won't at all, but. I wanted to give thanks and credit where it's due. Um, I wanted to start with Amy. Thank you for the direction you have for our district. Um, I have appreciated working alongside of you the past three years, getting to know you better. Um, getting to see how much dedication, commitment, time and energy you put into your, your role. Um, it really doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you very much. Um, to our directors, our admins, our teachers and staff. I know I've said it before, I know it sounds so cliche and I don't want to cry now, sorry, um, but, sorry. We truly are blessed with some of the best in our district and I mean that. I am so proud to be a part of the Superior School District and as Spartan community. And I know that there's always work to be done and improvements to be made, but I do believe that we are moving in the right direction, so thank you. To my fellow board members, thank you for your service. Um, we've obviously faced a lot of difficult decisions. I definitely have a greater appreciation for our leadership and for our elected officials, so thank you for the work that you've done. Thank you for the work that you're going to continue doing. Uh, to my family, um, thank you for the sacrifice that they have made when I decided to take on this role. Um, I definitely couldn't have done it without their love and support. And then last but not least to our community, um, sorry. Thank you for entrusting me in this role. Um, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. And I'm truly grateful for this opportunity. It's going to be a position, it, it's been a difficult, one of the most challenging roles I've ever served in, but one of the most rewarding as well. And I will really miss my time on the board, so thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Yeah, and is there any other report by board members?
I got nothing. Thank you, guys. We appreciate all the work that you've put in. It's obvious you guys are dedicated and you care about the community and the kids, so I just want to say thanks to you.
All right. Moving on? Maybe that should have been last.
Now we're going to pay the bills.
Yeah, almost. Uh, district of pro- Yeah, almost. Uh, district and program highlights, anything?
Well, I have a whole list, but I'm going to just say thank you to Brooke and Ed. Um, we have been through a lot together in the last three years. We've had a lot of challenges and a lot of, um, successes and celebrations as well. So, uh, thanks for the many extra hours that you probably didn't know you were signing up for. And we didn't know at that time either, all the extra meetings and the work that we were going to be doing these last three years. So thank you very much. And, you know, um, as you were talking, I think I'm a, a better superintendent having worked with you guys. So thank you.
I was going to buy you a new phone so Brooke wouldn't be able to call you.
New phone number. Take your number. Wasn't bad.
Thank you. Thank you. And, uh, I'll miss working with both of you. So thanks, Brooke.
Anything else?
Nah, that's not important.
All right, so consideration of bills and pre-approved bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and second to pay the bills. You discussed the non-bills. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. I think it's an error that there's another section for comments by members of the public. We'll scratch that. And I guess if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. I got the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Yeah, dabble.